All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Bristol Town Council Meeting of April 23rd. If you could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Welcome. We are going to start our meeting this evening with a recognition. We did this at our last meeting for a different group, but for the same purpose. Tonight, we're going to recognize the Mount Hope Huskies Swim Team. Is the coaches here? Can one of the coaches come up or all the coaches come up to the podium? If you would? No coaches? That's okay. Captains, we'll take captains. Guys, I'm going to put you, you're welcome. If you could come up to the podium? Gentlemen, could you introduce yourselves first?
Hi, my name is Finn McCaptain.
My name is Cohen Ferrer, Captain.
And I'm Liam Gagnar. I'm also a captain.
Gentlemen, welcome. These gentlemen are in front of us this evening, and we're recognizing them along with the team because of undefeated season. Is that correct? So first, we'll just stop there and give you a round of applause. Who else from the team is here? Come on up. Introduce yourself.
Very shy there.
I'm Kirian Rydel.
Welcome, all of you. So if one of you, one of the captains, could you just share how you got to this undefeated season? I've got some of it in front of me, but I'd love to hear it from your words.
So at the beginning, he can bring up them. So obviously, it took a lot of hard work, and at the beginning of the year, a lot of people joined. And even if they're new to the team, they made a big impact and hard work, and it's all showing up. We, we wanted to win at the beginning of the year, and we're happy we did. So I was happy with it.
Well said. Gentlemen, did you want to add anything else before I read a couple of things here? Do you blame them? Right? Finn, you did an outstanding job. All right, outstanding, great.
It's been a really great year. We really tried our best. We came to practice with a 110% effort. We really tried. We worked together as a team, and it really paid off, and it's been a great year.
Can I ask them a question quick? How did you get started on swimming? When did you, like, can somebody up here just? Did you go to swimming camps? Did you, or did you just start swimming right away? And you don't even have any memories of not swimming?
So I joined the high school team three years ago, but I started swimming about seven years ago. And I just started, my mom bribed me with food, so I was happy to join. So after that, I fell in love with it, and now I swim at the high school, and it's a good time.
Awesome.
So here's a couple of facts for you guys. First is they had a 6-0 regular season. Extraordinary achievement as Division III State Champions. Finn, who was just talking here, is first-team All-Division 200. Help me out with this. 200 and 100 free. What does that mean?
So the pool is 25 yards. So if you're swimming 200 or 100, so 200 is eight laps of the pool, and 100 is four laps of the pool, and freestyle is any way you want. It's just the fastest you can go.
So I've got about one lap, so good for you. Nice job.
And Chairman, you are swimming as fast as you can for those four laps.
Yes. Oh, you added that. That's important. Cohen Ferrera, first-team All-Division 100 Fly, 100 Breast. Tell us that.
Same thing, just four laps of the pool, but different strokes, so butterfly and breaststroke.
Okay, all right. And then Samuel Coles was first-team All-Division 50 Free. What does 50 Free mean?
So it's just, just down and back as fast as you can go, but takes, takes a lot of effort out of you.
I'm not downplaying it by any means, please. I know this. So other people that were recognized on this was Liam Gagnar, second-team All-Division 200 IM. I don't think that means instant message, right?
It's individual medley, so it's 50, so two laps of every single stroke.
Outstanding, outstanding. How do I say Kirian Rydel? Is that right? Did I say that right? Excellent. I'm sorry. So, and you did second-team All-Division 100 Fly and 100 Breast, correct?
Yeah.
Nice job. Nice job. Ben Coles, second-team All-Division 500 Free. Sam Coles, brothers? Nice. Sam Coles, second-team All-Division 100 Back. And then the relay team, which was Liam, Cohen, Kirin, I'm saying it poorly, and I apologize. And Ben did the second-team 200 medley relay. So this was, to take a moment to recognize your hard work. We, this council and this town, love doing things like this, is that it's a big deal what you did, and everybody here appreciates that and recognizes it. Another round of applause for these gentlemen. Counsel, anything more before I give the citation to them?
Just very briefly, as a former athlete and coach, you know, for 24 years at the high school, not swimming soccer, I can appreciate, you know, the work. As you said, you know, it takes a lot of hard work, and it takes a whole season. You've got to stay steady, fast. You've got to stay focused, you know, for a whole season. It's not easy, and obviously, being undefeated, that's a tremendous effort. That's wonderful.
Nice job.
Yeah. And, and all your practices, Roger Williams, is that where you're doing all your practices and everything like that? Or is it somewhere else?
So we used to practice at Roger Williams, but now we practice at Pods in East Providence. It's a different pool.
Okay.
At where?
Pods in East Providence.
I grew up swimming as a competitive swimmer. I grew up at the Bristol YMCA, which is the building where the Oyster Bar was. It was a beautiful pool, dating myself. But I can firsthand understand how hard you guys work, because swimming is one of those sports. You can't just take a day off or go, you know, relax for a week. You have to stick with it. And you're in, day in and day out, whether that water is warm, cold, and you just go in and you work your hardest. So excellent job. We are super proud of you. Great job.
Thank you, guys. Come on up, so I can give you this, and come up in front of everybody, so everybody can see you, please. Nice job. Push that for everybody. We'll take a handshake from everybody.
Congratulations. 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 Thanks.
I feel like I'm behind the basketball team again.
You can come back here. You can go on this end, and it'll be between all these folks. It's so much better that way. Anyway, let's push over a little bit. Well, just push that back out. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. Come on, kids. Come on, kids. Come on.
Nice job, guys. Outstanding, isn't it? And just to do a little bit of foreshadowing at the next meeting, but the meeting after, we have some more people to recognize, some more of our students from, from our schools. And there's a lot of achievement that happens, and we are absolutely ecstatic to, to see it and recognize it. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
So Chairman, members of the council, the first item of business is the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'd like to pull two items, if I may. If we could amend that to pull GG5.
DD5.
GG5 and also GG3, please.
GG3.
Yep.
Motion amended, as stated.
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the submission of minutes, and we have the Town Council Meeting Minutes from March 17, March 18, March 19, March 26, the special minutes from April 14, and the special workshop from April 14.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to approve. Any discussion?
It just, I think, shows that we've been pretty busy, getting quite a few things done.
Absolutely. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is C1. This is ordinance 2025-3, Chapter 17, Article 2 to Alcoholic Beverage Establishments, Section 1782, and this is to decrease the number of limited BV licenses from eight to seven. First reading.
Make a motion to consider first reading. Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim, as stated. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item is C2, ordinance number 2025-04, Chapter 17, offenses and miscellaneous provisions to Article 2 alcoholic beverages. And this is for Section 17-82, and this is for the number of licenses, and this is to increase the number of BV licenses from 32 to 33.
Make a motion to consider first reading. Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim, as stated. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Cue.
The next item is C3, and this is ordinance number 2025-5, Chapter 16, motor vehicles in traffic, Article 5, stopping, standing, and parking. This is for no parking box located across from 28 Shaw's Lane. First reading.
Make a motion to consider first reading. Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Cue.
The next item is C4. This is ordinance number 2025-06, Chapter 16, motor vehicles in traffic, Article 6, residential parking, Section 16345. And this is for the designated residential parking streets to include portions of Hope Street to the residential zone. First reading.
Make a motion to consider first reading. Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim, as stated. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item is C5, ordinance number 2025-7, zoning, Chapter 28, land use laws. And this is the adoption of the 2024 Legislative Session. This is first reading and call for public hearing on May 28.
Make a motion to consider first reading, call for public hearing on May 28.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Mary, as stated. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is D1. This is DeWolfe Tavern, 259 Thame Street. This is request permission to hold the Oyster Fest fundraiser on Sunday, June 15, from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. This includes a one-day liquor license extension to cover the outdoor common areas, and permission to display two banners on Hope Street for two at meeting document on the adias for the recommendation from community development.
Based on the positive recommendations, make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to approve. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Cue.
The next item on the agenda is D2. This is Alicia Castro on behalf of the Bristol Sports Club, 417 Wood Street. This is a request for bingo license on Thursday, May 22, from 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m.
Based on the recommendations, I make a motion to approve it.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Mary to approve. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Cue.
The next item on the agenda is D3. This is Charles McDonne, Bristol Fourth of July Committee, request for mobile food truck establishment event permit for outdoor concert series at Roger Williams University, June 21 through July 2, and this is from 5:30 to 10:00 p.m.
Based on the recommendations, I make a motion that we approve it. Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim to approve. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Cue.
The next item on the agenda is D4. This is Angela Cabral on behalf of the Franklin Court Assistant Living, 180 Franklin Street. This is a request for bingo license on Wednesday, May 14, from 5:30 to 9:00 p.m. And there's also a received at meeting document, which is a recommendation from the Bristol Police Department.
Based on the recommendations, I make a motion that we approve it. Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim to approve. Any discussion?
Just briefly, this is the second request for bingo. I guess we have a third one. Quite a few groups are doing fundraisers, so that's awesome.
Outstanding.
Bingo. Bingo, Tony.
Bingo.
It's the low-hanging fruit, isn't it? It really is. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Oops, thank you. Did I miss somebody?
Angela is here, and I'm not sure if she wants to mention anything about the
Angela, did you want a 30-second commercial? I'll take that as a yes. If you could state your name and address for the record, please, and feel free to bring it down from Finn.
Yeah, I'm not a swimmer. Angela Cabral, 11 Sandy Lane in Bristol. And I am the administrator at Franklin Court. I want to thank you very much for approving this. We plan, and Amy Leto is the director of nursing, she's with me. But we're very excited about this, because what we hope to do is raise enough money to send our residents to P-PAC a few times. It's very expensive to go to P-PAC, and they love to go to Providence and the whole experience, so we really appreciate it.
Any particular show you're going to see?
We're not sure yet. There's so many good ones.
If there's space on the bus, we're just throwing it out there.
We always need extra help.
Mr. Chairman, I, ever. Not just the residents, is that right?
Yes, yes. It's open to all, anyone who would like to go.
So it is on May 14?
Wednesday, May 14.
Wednesday, May 14, 5:30 to 9:00.
Right.
So if you want to come, come, and it goes to a good cost.
Yes, and right over here at the Franklin Court Independent Living Community Room. I'm sure you all know where that is.
Yes, we do. Please come.
In the cafeteria?
Yeah, the community room.
Community.
Outstanding. Good luck.
Thanks.
Thank you.
So Chairman, members of the council, the next item on the agenda is F1. This is Maria Andre, 28 Shaw's Lane. This is the resolution for the removal of the accessible parking space. Second reading.
The emotion is to refer to, no, it's already been drafted.
It's second reading, so it's to adopt and approve the resolution.
So I make a motion that we approve it.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Mary, as stated. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is F2. This is the Health Equity Zone has request council consideration to adopt a proclamation declaring May as Mental Health Awareness Month and a public service announcement for the May 9, 2025 Suicide Prevention Ribbon Project. You will also notice that there is a received at meeting document, which is an invitation, and I believe Lynn and Melissa is going to come up to
Welcome.
Hi.
If you could state your names, names, plural, and address for the record, please.
Sure. Melissa Goldstein, 103 Peck Avenue in Bristol.
Welcome.
Lynn Patton, 36 Acacia Road, Rhode Island.
Welcome.
Hello. So I'm just here to request the council's support to adopt the proclamation proclaiming May as Mental Health Awareness Month in Bristol, which would emphasize the importance of raising awareness of mental health issues, support those who are struggling, and work, have us work together to break stigma surrounding mental health illness. And we wanted to, along with that request, we just wanted to bring the community, like, let the community know that there, we have our third annual Week of Caring and Connection coming up in May as part of our mental health awareness, things that we do. And it has a week of activities, which we have brought, some of the calendars, they're on the back table. A week of activities that are around town that help support a variety of things. There's activities, there's events, everything from food, a food drive to, for the high school, and to various events. And I have Lynn with me to talk specifically about the May 9 event, which is, I believe, in your packets.
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. I've been here before, so I recognize some of you, and I want to thank you so much for having me here to listen to this. As you know, I'm Lynn Patton from the Matthew Patton Foundation, after our son Sergeant Matthew Patton died by suicide 12 years ago, 12th year this May 15, 13. So we developed this organization to save lives purely. It's just to save lives, and we've done 35 at least that we know of across the country of veterans and active duty that have gone missing that we have found and saved. But we do a lot more other things. We travel to various bases across the country to do a suicide prevention talk. And I base it all on my son's experience, because that's the easiest way of remembering all the risk factors and whatnot. So I had this idea, the way we used to do the flag installations, and we would like to have, we're down here in Bristol, because they are spectacular, because that's 660 flags for the 660 veterans who lose their lives every month. But I said, let's do one for the civilians. So I said, let's do the same concept, only we'll make ribbons with blue, with teal and purple, which stands for awareness and prevention. There's 120 Rhode Islanders who died by suicide in 2022, and it was also 120 from years 2014 to 2020. So it's about 120 that we need to start saving. So we are going to do a ribbon installation instead of a flag installation. It's going to be down near the Quintana area, the bike path right in front of that. It's May 9. Do I have a clock? At 5:00. And we would like to have any one of you there to put the 140, 120 stakes in with the ribbon and remember to either someone who you lost to suicide or in your support of suicide prevention. I would really love to have you all there, because it's profound, and that's how we can get the information out to anyone who needs to know, because knowledge is power. If you don't know the problem exists, you can't solve it. And so I, I'm very excited by this, because I'm now into the civilian sector and drawing our horizons. And also, especially, I hope I see you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very passionate about the subject.
I just want to say, I'm so glad to see you and John here, only because when I had read the material, I, I thought about your organization, and I didn't, but I didn't see the reference. I see it on here, though. So I'm very happy that you guys are involved with all of that. Thank you for everything you've been doing.
This is breaking us up. We're stronger than ever. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And I know a lot of people struggle silently, and so I'm sure, you know, I just want to let you know, I know this town will help to make this and promote this and make it visible out there, so we can help as many people as possible, because one is too many. Absolutely. So thank you for all your work.
We just need a motion to approve, please?
Motion to adopt.
Second. Even better. So that motion made by Tim, seconded by Mary, discussion? I do real quick. You said 35 people. You saved 35 people. So to me, one person saved is just, it's just beyond belief. I do want to hear it, please.
I have a few of them, but I'll create this amazing one. Okay. There was a veteran in Nebraska, out that area, Iowa, one of those states. Dropping, and so he went into the cornfields with his gun, and I don't know if he could, just couldn't do it right away or whatever, but the wife came home, found the note, and the police got to him in time. And it turned out, he either found us on the internet, or someone told him about us on the internet. And if you go to our website, under our story, I have created a video about Matt coming home from the plane with his coffin, kind of moving down, and the faces of the people involved, and how sad we were. I think it gets to people, you know, so this guy just said, I will never do this to you ever again, and he's still alive today. So these are success stories we have.
I think we all think it's tremendous. So outstanding, outstanding work that you're doing. When we talk about it, we improve it. When we don't talk about it, it gets worse. So
All for free. We don't take a darn.
Outstanding. So we had a motion and a second to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you and good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Chairman, members of the council, the next item on the agenda is F3. This is Stephen Elmigian, the co-chairman of the Armenian National Committee of Rhode Island. This is a request to fly the Armenian flag at the Bristol Town Hall on April 24, 2025. Says 23, that's a typo, sorry.
I make a, I make a motion to approve it. Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Mary to approve. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is F4. This is Allison Borges, 6 Dominic Court, and Mark Overe, 39 Spring Street. And this is in regards to voter initiative to enact a proposed ordinance to establish permanent venue for the Bristol Fourth of July Concert Series.
Before we move forward, I checked with the solicitor, and I'd like to combine both F4 and F5, because it's kind of all the same dialogue. Can I have a motion to that effect?
So move. Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim, as stated. Any discussion? Uh, what? Sorry, one sec. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right, so we will start with the solicitor, and certainly the petitioner will be next. Please, come up. What I'm going to do is, I'm going to ask the solicitor to take a moment, explain the process.
Sure.
And also, what possible outcome, excuse me, outcomes can come from it.
Well, I'm happy to do so.
Thank you.
So the right to enact ordinances is embodied in your town charter, Section 503, and it allows the qualified electors to petition the town council to enact an ordinance. Basically, they have to obtain 150 signatures of qualified electors that are approved by the clerk's office, the board of canvases. If, in fact, they get that 150, the petition comes before you. You need to decide on it within 40 days. There are two petitions that have made it to you. One would set a permanent venue for the concert, the Fourth of July concert. The other one would set the parade route, would basically establish it into law as to where the parade route will be, and the only way it could be changed is through a vote by the electors. This evening, after you hear from the petitioners and ask questions and other individuals, so you can decide how you want to act, you have, you know, basically agree with the petition, and you decide to enact the two ordinances. As with all ordinances, you'd submit it to my office. I would go through it and bring it back, and we'd go through the ordinance adoption procedure. You also could decide after hearing this evening that you decide not to do so. You would vote to deny the petition or the two petitions, in which case, those who brought the petition would have the right to go back out to obtain 1,000 signatures from qualified electors. If they were able to do that, and once it's confirmed by the board it would then be played. If we go, if, in fact, that were to happen, once again, my office would review the proposal. The ballot question would consist of a title of the ordinance and a summary of what it's about, and voters would be asked to approve or deny. That's basically
Mr. Solicitor, just clarity, you mentioned special or regular election.
That's the council would decide that. The council decides whether it be a special or regular election. Yes.
So before I give you the floor, so you heard, we all heard from the solicitor, those guidelines. We're going to hear from you next, and why you're petitioning both of, both of these petitions. After that, I'd like to hear from the police chief, and also the administrator and possibly the administrator's department heads. If, if there's way in necessary, obviously, the council can, can weigh in at any point on that. If the pub, this is not a public hearing, but this council has a, a long history of allowing the public to speak, even if it's not a public hearing, and that will happen here tonight. If we go there, then I will limit public input to two minutes a person, so we can keep it fair. That has been our consistent way of handling that through all of those, so I want to be consistent on this, too. So Allison, if you could please state your full name for the record and address, and then the floor is yours.
All right. My name is Anne Marie LaRoche, 6 Dominic Court for Silver, Rhode Island. Allison Borges and Mark Overe could not be here this evening. She is out of state due to work involvement. Good evening, honorable Town Council members. Thank you for your service and dedication to our community. My name is Allison Borges. I wish I could be with you all tonight. However, I am currently out of state. I required, I inquired about an alternative hearing date or appearing remotely by Zoom, but unfortunately, neither could be accommodated. Therefore, I have written this letter to be read on my behalf. Born and raised in Bristol, I, like many Bristolians, have a deep love for our Fourth of July celebration. It's part of what makes this town truly special, bringing our community together and welcoming visitors from around the world. I and the entire group who worked on the issues before you tonight also value, respect, and thank all the volunteer members of the Bristol Fourth of July Committee, who worked tirelessly all year long to keep this tradition alive. While we feel they made a grave error in relocating the concert series, this does not negate this does not negate all the positive work they do, and that should be clear to this community. The decision to relocate the concert series to Roger Williams prompted an overwhelming negative response from Bristol residents, one that led to the creation of a petition that garnered over one thousand nine hundred signatures and the raising of over twenty thousand dollars in funds in an attempt to provide solutions to the safety concerns that led to the venue change. Came together and showed how much they cared about the concert series being in the downtown. Committee members have even told us that no one on the committee wanted to move the venue, but that safety recommendations by the police department ultimately swayed the group. While we understand and respect that there are some safety concerns, many of those concerns revolved around one or two nights of the concert series when the crowd is larger. There are undoubtedly creative solutions that can be implemented to mitigate those concerns, and we, in fact, discussed some of those with the police chief directly at a prior meeting. There are many public, large-scale events all over the world with audience sizes far greater than anything Bristol experiences, and they are kept safe through comprehensive crowd management and safety plans. Some simple solutions that could be implemented include closing down Thame Street to Through the Park for the exclusive use of first responders. Excuse me. Closing down Thame Street to traffic and parking during the events, placing crowd control barriers to create a middle aisle through the park for the exclusive use of first responders, and relocating food vendors to the street to open up more space for spectators. Additionally, while we understand that the police chief prefers Roger Williams from a safety perspective, he did say publicly that he could make Independence Park work with a more robust safety plan and additional resources. Ultimately, this decision to move the concert tears, tears at the fabric of what makes the concert series great and what has led to its success. Independent Park is a beautiful and centrally located venue in the heart of town within walking distance to many residents' homes, local businesses, the bike path, bringing the entire community together. People enjoy the event, not just for the music, but for a way to reconnect with friends, family, and neighbors. Roger Williams being located on the edge of town away from businesses, homes, and the bike path and requiring vehicles or shuttles to access removes the community aspect of the event and will undoubtedly lead to lower attendance by Bristol residents and will have negative impact on the vibrancy and economic vitality of the town. Bristol should be encouraging events and initiatives that bring foot traffic to the downtown, not removing them. This current situation is also very different when the event moved from Colt School to Independence Park because of those venues had the same benefits that come with the downtown location. Further, while touted benefits of Roger Williams include a claim of eight hundred parking spots, that capacity actually pales in comparison to what is available downtown when you take into account walking, biking, boating, and people parking at friends and families' homes in the downtown core, none of which could happen at Roger Williams. If you average two people per car at Roger Williams, that is sixteen hundred people, far less than many of the concerts have historically had for attendance. From our discussions with residents and businesses, we believe that a majority of Bristol residents strongly oppose the venue change, think the security concerns do not amount to the level of requiring the move, and are ready and willing to vote the proposed audience, ordinances you have in front of you into law. They simultaneously protect the traditions and allow for future flexibility by giving the voters a voice in venue or route changes. The concert ordinance also allows for temporary relocations in case of emergencies in section four, which states, "In the event of a public emergency, natural disaster, or other extraordinary circumstances rendering Independence Park unusable, the town administrator, with the approval of the town council, may authorize a temporary relocation of the concert series for that year only. Any such temporary location should not be construed as a permanent change in venue." We're asking you tonight to consider adopting these ordinances and offer a couple of changes that would be acceptable and would end our efforts for a ballot initiative. Add the temporary relocation in case of emergencies provision to the parade route ordinance. Change the effective date to January first, two thousand twenty-six. Sincerely, Allison Borges. Save Bristol forth.
Tell me your first name again. Is it Anne?
My name is Anne Marie.
Anne Marie. Anne Marie. If there are questions that come up, should we pose them to you?
I don't know.
I don't want to put you in harm's way.
I don't know.
That's okay.
I might say the wrong thing.
That's why I wanted to ask. We did not pose those questions to you.
Probably not.
So.
But there might be something I could answer. I can just let you know. Yes or no?
That's absolutely fine.
So do I stay here or do I go back and sit down?
Whatever you're comfortable with. So.
All right. I'll go back and sit.
I don't blame you at all. Chief, would you weigh in on a few things? And obviously, your own words. We heard from what was read. It's okay. One sec.
Can you hear me?
Yep. Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
With me tonight is Captain Stephen St. Pierre. He is the author of what we call a after-action report. I see some military folks in the room. The military refers to it as a hot wash. So prior to any major event going on in the town of Bristol, especially related to Fourth of July Christmas Committee Grand Illumination, the Bristol Police Department prepares a comprehensive safety plan. We look at traffic. We look at estimated crowd size. We look at issues with parking. We look at vehicle-borne threats. We take a whole host of look at what possibly go right, what could go wrong. And it's our duty and obligation to put the proper resources, work with state and federal partners to build the best safety plan that we can. And the credit goes to my former predecessors, the chiefs. This parade's been going on a lot longer than these events than Chief Lynch. So we have built upon their excellence, so much so during the budget process. You heard that we're also looking for ancillary equipment that we have out there for grants to help us with crowd, crowd safety. And so after the event of this year, we prepared an after-action report. One of the things that the after-action report says, what did the Bristol Police Department do, correct? What did we do wrong? What improvements could we make for the following year? And we write all of those things down, and when we look at making the preparation plan for the following year, we go back. This report was completed immediately after the event, not for any special meeting, not for any budgetary process. We do it while it's fresh in our mind. We have a team meeting, and we discuss the whole operation as a total, and we put it all down in writing so that we can make improvements and we can deliver the best outcomes possible when it comes to safety, convenience, traffic. And that's exactly what we did this year after the parade. In that report, Captain St. Pierre identified some safety issues. And I had an opportunity to speak at Bristol Fourth of July Committee meeting, and I identified those. At no time did the Bristol Police Department make a mandate that the venue had to change, that I had selected an ancillary venue. I identified the security issues and the safety issues that we had at the two thousand twenty-four event. And if there's any questions about what those esoteric issues are, I have Captain St. Pierre, who will eloquently go through those so you can get a better understanding of what those issues are. And I, for the record, I'd like to say I completely concur with the findings in, in his analysis and his report. As you know, I am a staple at every one of the concert series. I have boots on the ground and like to assist and to be on the front lines during these special events that the town has.
Thank you, Chief. Chief, anything in particular that's, obviously, everything is worth sharing. Is there anything in particular that you'd like to share now in regards to that report? So as the chief said, this is a comprehensive review that we've done, not just for last year's event. Am I, am I coming through the microphone?
No.
Not just for last year's event, but in every previous year that we have looked at. And the issues that were identified in two thousand twenty-four were issues that were enumerated in two thousand twenty-three and in previous years to that, essentially surrounding around the fact that the venue at Independence Park, although it has numerous attributes and is an excellent venue from a security standpoint, it presents specific challenges. In that, you're talking. Could you, two things that I'd ask you to address, there's more things, but let's address the twenty thousand dollars. Chief, you were on the radio about a month or so ago, approximately, and the interviewee asked, I'm going to paraphrase because I don't remember the exact words. What do you need? Additional monies? What would it cost? And I don't recall if it was to keep people safe, for the safety, what do you need for your officer? I'm not going to try to quote it, but you get the gist of it. Let's, let's address that.
Yeah. So after the Fourth of July Committee had made a vote, I received a call from WPRO that would ask me if I would go on and discuss the issues that I raised. I sent out a presser to the local media. I wanted to make a public statement in that, you know, it was clear that the department didn't make a mandate. As I said, we respect the historical traditions and the concerns that the residents have of the time. But at the end of the day, I have a duty and an obligation to report facts and circumstances that could put residents of this town or people coming in at risk. And that's exactly, you know, what we did. And as I stated, I completely endorse the report that Captain St. Pierre chose. But the twenty thousand dollar figure came from exactly what a lot of the things that the petitioner was talking about, talking about closing the roadway down, closing those access points down. We would have to bring in additional police and fire personnel to stand at every one of those road closures to redirect traffic, to let maybe a vendor come in. We just can't put up a Jersey barrier and close the roadway off. If there was a fire at one of those thirteen residents or a business or emergency personnel have to get in, we've got to be able to open that road back up for emergency response vehicles. So every one of those points where we would close the road would need traffic safety personnel, fire safety personnel. We also now have to look at, by closing down that one corridor, we're pushing all of the pedestrian and all of the traffic up onto Hope Street, further up on the High Street. We would need additional officers working up in those neighborhoods. You just can't drive down a road and block it off. You have to have signage. So some of that money would, would come in, working with our sign vendor that DPW uses and creating some detours, permanent detour signs, explanations where handicapped people could or could not go. So there's a lot to go when you're educating a public who want to come to an event. Have you ever came upon an issue where the road is closed, there's no signage, there's no direction, and now you've got four or five thousand people inside of their vehicles, and there's no direction on what to do? The road's shut down. So we have to have a huge campaign of educating people on where to go. We have to shut those roads down, but we also have to be there to kick those obstructions off in the roadway if safety personnel, fire department, or EMS need to get in. And so those were those costs. You know, when you look at the events, there were, there were three nights, the petitioner was correct, that, you know, the crowds certainly exceeded the footprint for Independence Park. That was the twenty-eighth, the twenty-ninth, and July second. the 29th, and July 2nd. Those bands were, back in the day, seven day weekend in the Billy Joel tribute band. So those regional tribute bands are bringing in crowds that are exceeding what we feel as though Independence Park can safely, you know, accommodate. There were reports that people were kind of squished up against the vendors, and that's why there's a recommendation to put them in the roadway now. That also has complexities too, you know, filling the roadway up with, you know, the food trucks for that ebb and flow, you know, of traffic. But again, it was a consideration. If we are directed as employees of the town to return there, the petitioner has some, some great suggestions. There's no doubt about it. We met with them. And I have to agree that some of those were on our tentative plan if they had voted to return it back to Independence Park. The big issue is, it's an open venue. Some concert series that they talk about, you have a ticket. You can control how many people are going to come to the event. And at the Bristol events, there is no limit on how many people can come. So for somebody to say, well, this band, well, this band, we're not sure the crowd is going to be this. I have to build a plan that would accommodate the crowd at its largest size, not at its smallest size, because that's when you get kind of caught. There could be a couple of rain dates, and then it's a nice weather event, and everybody wants to come out, and it wasn't as a popular band, but the weather conditions, there are so many factors that change. Who's going to come out, why people are going to come out. We're post-COVID. People are coming out and they're enjoying this beautiful town. And we want to make it, we want to provide the safest event possible, you know, for the residents. I, I feel personally awful about, you know, the, I can accept the criticisms, it comes with the job. I understand that. And, and I respect history and tradition, you know, I am not a teenager in this job. I try to make mature decisions and to provide good guidance for the Fourth of July Committee, Council, the Administrator, and I think that's what we did.
Thank you, Chief.
Mr. Administrator.
Yeah, I, I think the Police Department covered many of the main points of the situation. I, to reiterate what the chief said, that was July 31st, when I got the first communication regarding the after-action report. And it's, the memo stated that the highlights of certain concerts had simply exceeded the park's capacity, which spilled out onto the roadway and walking areas. So that was July, right immediately after. And then, as the chief said, there was a meeting with the Fourth of July Committee, the Concert Committee, and these, some of the things that you heard were brought to their attention. And, you know, I think, unfortunately, I think it was the right decision, you know, safety is paramount. We all like the location, but as the chief said, the regional bands are simply drawing a larger crowd that the Police Department can oversee. You heard that it is an ungated venue. We hear many times that there are a lot of huge concerts and a lot of similar-sized concerts on public property. But I would say most of them that are well-managed are gated, where, you know, there are security checkpoints, where people are screened. You heard some of, some of the threats are active shooter vehicles, packages. These are things that happen. And it's unfortunate, that's the world we live in, you know. We like to continue the, supporting the concerts. It's, they're great evenings. It's a great, great, great venue for appropriate-sized concerts. But spilling into the road, the road isn't going to work. We didn't even bring the fire chief in and talk about what his current concerns are if we had to close the road down. That's, it's going to be more than $20,000. The chief's assessment does not include the fire department, but there's going to be a fire engine and a rescue that's going to have to be staged there. It's, it's a neighborhood. It's not a concert venue. We do the best we can with it. Several years back, we put the bollards there, and we tried to keep the crowd within the bollards protected. And I guess we'll talk a little bit about the parade. Parades, we have an excellent parade route. There's no question about the parade route right now. Years ago, there was an issue after the Boston Marathon, when the military came in and they did an assessment of our parade route, and they said they weren't going to send the military personnel because they were concerned about vehicle threats. That's when the Police Department then got the National Guard and additional vehicles, and we blocked all those intersecting streets. So it's no longer an issue. They're confident, and we're confident that we have that covered. But that's one day. That's not two weeks. And that's, as far as I'm concerned, that parade is a necessity. But we have an alternative site for this year. There are many people that are excited about it. There's ample accessible parking there. So this year, we're good to go. We're looking forward to the concert series. But I'm here for questions also, but I fully concur, and I supported the Police Department's assessment. And I support the volunteers of the Fourth of July Committee that do an outstanding job to preserve our character of the town, you know, patriotism and what Bristol stands for. So I also want to, I'm sure you'll thank our volunteers, but I wanted to beat you to it.
Can I ask you a question? As a follow-up?
Carrie.
Excuse me. I'm having a little bit of an allergy attack, it seems like. Do either the chief or Steve, do you know what, I know it's hard to gauge the capacity of the park because it's not gated, there's no seats per se, and it's open all around, and people are standing outside of, even if you were to gate it off, you know, fence it off, is people going to be out there? But how many people do you think is the capacity? How many people do you think on a regular night actually attend? And how many people would attend on these tribute band nights? Because I mean, I've, what I've heard, I did not go to them, but what I've heard is that people left with their children and saying, I don't feel safe here. This is too much. And, I mean, I've been down to that park, like when we had the, you know, concert and the fireworks in the past, and felt the same way myself, to be honest with you. So I'm just wondering if you guys have some actual numbers that you can put to that approximately?
I'm going to ask the Police Department to answer that, but, but I will say, on a positive note with the offsite, the, the alternative location, there's a question, well, what's the difference? You could still have an unknown amount of, of concert goes at the other location. The difference is, they can be turned away, quite frankly. If there's an incident on the concert venue, traffic can be stopped at the entranceways, and they could be, they could be flagged on. So you can stop, you know, additional people from arriving. But I've, I've worked those, years ago, I worked several of those concerts where it was, we were, we were kind of, we were caught. And we had to do an impromptu road closure there. And it wasn't, there were a lot of angry people. I recall, the Beaver Brown Band was one night when they showed up, and it was, back then, the Providence Journal was popular, and they did a Sunday feature on it at last minute. And I think it was a Sunday night concert, and I don't know if anyone here remembers it, but we were somewhat overwhelmed. Thank God, nothing happened. But the bottom line is, it's very unfortunate, the world we live in. There are, there are bad people out there. And the world has changed where, doesn't take long to go on the internet, find out where the nearest patriotic event is. And I hate to even bring it up. No one wants to talk about it, including myself. But we have to be realistic here. And I appreciate the, the Police Department being firm and, and bringing this to our attention. So.
And can I, just before you answer, just one quick comment. I agree 100% with that. But I do want to comment that it's not just potential terrorist attack. It is a major structure fire, as you've said. Something happening to somebody where no one could get to them to help them. I mean, there's a lot of other things, as we've seen even with the parade, for example, a few, I don't know how many years ago it was, but I think it was two years in a row, up here at the reviewing stand, you know, the, the horses went a little bit, got spooked by the, by the mural that was on the ground. That's why that's not there anymore. And, you know, thank goodness that the, that their handlers were able to make sure they didn't go too far into the crowd, but that's where they were heading. So it could be somebody having a medical emergency who's driving a float or who's, you know, driving a car down there. So there's a lot of things that can happen beyond what we think about with the world that we're living in. So I just, I just wanted to make that point because it's, it's, it's a lot of things to take into consideration. I know it seems very simple. Like I was saying, you know, like if we ever went, if they ever went back to that location, you'd have to like fence it in, you'd have to like have a ticket system, whether it's free or charge, just so you could have some capacity issues. But then that creates a bunch of other issues. So I'm sorry, I just, go ahead. I'm so sorry. I just wanted to throw that out there.
The Town Administrator is completely correct in that if we have to ad hoc, shut the road down, it creates a compounded problem. You now have a ton of vehicles in that area, and you have the perception that it's safe for pedestrians, which is what we had on numerous instances over the course of 2024, and a few instances over the course of 2024. And then people want to leave. And how do you stop those people from leaving? And you have all those people in the road, and you've created the thing that you're trying to protect against. So there's a lot of pre-planning and logistics that have to go into that road closure for a protracted period of time, like a two-week concert series. When we're talking about capacity issues, I, the story that you're relaying, there, I don't know if, if I'm talking about the same event, but there are members of the committee that are here tonight that were there with me, where people communicated the exact same sentiment to us at the end of the concert series last year, where they were leaving. And because it's an open venue, people are leaving because they're, they're uncomfortable, because it's overcrowded, and more patrons are attending. They're now arriving. So you're not seeing any alleviation of that congestion. When you look at Independence Park, if you look at a capacity issue, you have about 50,000 square feet of venue that you can put people in, if we removed the vending from that area. If you look at the singular field that was proposed for 2025 for Roger Williams, that's 82,000 square feet. So you have double the potential capacity. If you're looking at a large attendance night, you're looking at several thousand people in a 50,000 square foot area. If you're looking at a large attendance night at Roger Williams, you're looking at several thousand people in an 80,000 square foot area.
You say several thousand, do you mean like 3,000, 10,000? I mean, I just, I'm not good at gauging that.
You're absolutely, at 2, 3,000, you're right around that number. So for, for a 50,000 square foot area, where you have limited visibility, it's a very difficult thing to police.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel. You are welcome to ask questions, and if not, I, I know you have comments that you'll also like to make. I can't open it to the public if there's questions. I'd like to give you all a shot first.
I'd like to, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Of course you can.
As someone who had, have been or was the Town Administrator, and also the Director of Public Safety, just like Steve is right now, I've been on both sides. I've been on the side where I had to work with the police. And let me tell you, it takes a lot of work. There is, I'm not going to shoot, but I, we have over 20 agencies that are coming to town to assist us. And I'm not going to get into too many details because that's, when we're talking about safety and security, that's exactly that. That's why you don't talk about the details. But I can assure you that it takes a lot of effort on the police and coordination, and the part of the Police Department, and the part of the Fire Department to, to, to ensure that things all run smooth. And when we're talking about safety and security, no, we should, we should not sacrifice anything for that. So just to keep you, that's my opinion on this. So.
Yeah.
I, I, listen, I remember growing up as a kid, going down with my father down to Colt School and watching, you know, Simon the Barking Dog, and he didn't bark very much, but it was a very small, small concert situations. And what happened, we outgrew that. And we now went down to Independence Park, and the concerts have been hugely successful, and some bring very much overcrowding. And for me, listen, I'm a lifelong supporter of the Fourth of July tradition. I, I, you know, I value our deep community pride and cherish the celebration. But when it comes to fixing a location by law, which is at hand tonight, it really hinders our adaptability for safety concerns, like overcrowding, infrastructure issues, weather. So I think, to my colleagues, I think it puts us on the hook, the town on the hook legally and financially, risky-wise, if we put an ordinance in place tonight, and that is our decision tonight. So, and our responsibility tonight is governance, which means planning for the future in mind. And what we're hearing tonight is there are some really red light glaring safety issues down at Independence Park that we can't overlook. And if we do overlook by tying us to an ordinance, I think it's going to really tire us hands down. Because when you're running, when the Fourth of July Committee is running a large event, an ordinance is a hindrance, it's not flexibility. And they need to have the flexibility to be able to move vents where they need to go. And I just think this ordinance would be a real detriment to the overall Fourth of July. So that's, that's just my opinion.
Very well said.
Yeah, no, thanks, Councilman. I think you made some really good points there about ordinances and kind of the inflexibility sometimes of ordinances when we need to adapt. I have a question for the chief. We've been talking a lot about the parade and everything like that, but we also have an ordinance before us about the parade route. And there's some pretty, the, the locations that are included in the proposed ordinance are pretty fixed. Can you think of any public safety reasons why we might need to, you know, change the parade route on a dime if, in case, you know, something comes to your attention or anything like that?
Mr. Administrator, go ahead.
There was an issue a few years ago, I hate to bring it up, but the Silver Creek Bridge, there was discussion on what we're going to do there during the parade if they had to, if they're in the middle of the, the gas main work. So it could be something like that, that we would have had to figure something out. There are circumstances where we, I don't know of any right now. I don't know any in the near future. But there could be things like that, construction or, you know, major flooding, a bridge, Silver Creek Bridge goes down. It could be something like that.
Yeah. Okay. And Chief, I know we've been, we've been talking a little bit about some of the threats that might come from errant vehicles and, and things like that. And one of the things that I've always wondered about would be threats that might be coming from the harbor. Are there any, has there ever been any concern about that at all? Or maybe like active shooters from that direction versus?
I don't want to get into details of the security plan, but as far as waterborne threats, those are included in our safety plans. So what level of, in agencies that we have in the water, I will leave to the confidentiality of the plan. But I can't assure you that the Bristol Police Department currently and in, in the past, has addressed that issue.
Okay. Thank you.
I think the whole thing is like very, very complicated. I think we all know that because we've, you know, we have two weeks approximately of the concerts, or 10 days at least, which is a huge resource, use of resources. And it's hard to find people that want to work every single one of those days, including all the people that you bring in, you know, from other communities that work down there. I mean, I know the, the dogs are usually from Providence, I believe, and things like that. So we've, we've had all of that. And I think the same thing with the, you know, it's been alluded that, you know, it's more or less been somewhat resolved. But on the parade route, there was been two police chiefs prior, one shortly after, excuse me, 9/11, and then another police chief about the, the egress at the first section of the parade. And I think that those are real concerns, particularly as I mentioned earlier, not just a terrorist type of attack, but certainly a structure fire or anything else. There's not a lot of places to go. But once you get downtown, you can get pretty much up to Medicon without any problem. You get people out, you can do evacuation a whole lot easier. So I think there's a lot, you've got the water, you've got the land, you've got all kinds of, of issues. And I think it's very, very complicated. And I think it's up to the councils. I couldn't, I think Tim put it very, very well. I mean, that's how I view this. Like you, we have to be able to turn on a dime. You have to be able to turn, the administrator, the people charged with security and safety. I mean, we, we have a volunteer committee that puts this together, and everybody should be thankful that that's what we have. And that, for 200-plus years, 200, I think, 40, I think it is, this year, we've been able to do that, and that people still have an interest in doing it. And we can't tie people's hands because we're living in a world that is completely different, just in so many different areas. So I think we really have to be as flexible as we can. But we also have to keep in mind that, I never thought, so I've lived in the, in the middle of the parade route my entire life. And I never thought that I would see the day when we were, so I, I always knew, insert, that there were plenty of undercover police officers and other people at the concerts, for example. But after the Boston Marathon bombing, is when some of our other FBI, Homeland Security, others took like a more of an interest in what was going on in Bristol. And if you recall that year, I believe it was probably 2013, I mean, not only the undercovers that were there, but the plane, but the people in uniform with, I call them machine guns. At not only the undercovers that were there, but the plane, but the people in uniform with, I call them machine guns, they may be whatever other weapons, automatic weapons, whatever is the official name. I mean DEA, ATF, FBI, all their jackets on, walking around that concert venue. I found that astonishing and I mean, in one year, it's like, oh, well, they're all here, it should be safe. But the same token, this is Bristol, Rhode Island, and we've got all these people walking around with machine guns, literally. In a concert venue, um, in a family event, so. You never know what's going to happen and we have to be prepared for everything, so it's a monumental task. For taking on these kind of events and we do it. And I really think we just have to be able to not have it tied into a, uh. Into an ordinance and be prescriptive as to where it's going to be, how it's going to be, how you can change it. You can't just run and get in, you know, have a special election three days before because there's a a credible threat, you know, so on the parade. So I I mean, I would say that I I I I think it's very hard to put anybody in this in that kind of a position. I mean, I, I understand the people who are very concerned about this. And I give them credit for taking action and bringing it to the public, uh, or to their, um, policymakers. But I think there's so much more that goes into this than any of us who not doing it every day even realize. And I think I, I think, living in the middle of it, I realize a lot of it. I've seen a lot of fights over the years, I've seen a lot of bad things going on. Um, in relation to different, different kinds of things, you know, downtown was different, there were more bars downtown, things like that. So, um, anyway, but I appreciate the work that the police department has done as well with the after action report. And, you know, how seriously we've been very, very fortunate and how seriously our, our police department, your federal partners and state partners. And everybody that we deal with to that we've been very, very fortunate. And we don't know, most of us sitting up here, maybe the exception of Tony when he was administrator, maybe Nathan as council chair, Steve, most of us don't know. Those little details of what you may know and you may be concerned about. And I think it's difficult for some, for another group of people who don't have a law enforcement background to even be trying to take this issue on. So anyway, I appreciate what you all do. Um, so thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Of course.
Shut up, yeah.
And Hayden. So we've heard a lot, I'm, I'm gonna allow the public speak, if anybody wanted, you are more than welcome and I'm just come up to the podium. I will, I'm just going to share my thoughts before I, uh, open it up to the public. I think a lot of great points were made, uh, I'm gonna make a couple. One is that this is a free concert. This is a free concert, so it's okay to just say thank you on it. And if you, I believe also it's okay for this petitioner or anyone to question whether or not these things are right. We have a wonderful, you've heard me say this a million times about, we have a great process. And this is a great process, this is what's supposed to happen. You shouldn't just say, the police said this is right, so therefore that's it. It's okay to question, it's okay to get clarity. Thank you, Chief, Captain, for the clarity that you gave on here. I like Independence Park, I really like the concerts down there, I really do. I don't know of a Fourth of July committee member that I've talked to that said, um, I really want to move the concerts. It the giggles that you hear, and I'm going to go serious here for a moment. The disgusting comments made to the Fourth of July Committee. You should be ashamed of yourselves, you know who you are, because I've seen the comments myself. Absolutely unacceptable. This town and the public support our committees, including the Fourth of July Committee. These are gosh darn volunteers, and this is where my next point is going. How does the council or this town compel a volunteer to do anything? What are we gonna do, take their what away? Right? So the attitude that I have, again, this is, the petitioner has the right to ask the question. I also commend the petitioner on the letter that was written this evening because they appreciated the Fourth of July, they came out and said it. So just because those negative comments, they're, I'm not saying that was the petitioner, in fact, I don't believe it was, I didn't think I had anything to do with that. They believe that it's a beautiful place to have a concert. I think we all agree, it is a beautiful place to have a concert. The problem is. I was with my family on the Billy Joel night, poor guy, he's getting roasted for something he didn't do, right? He's just really popular, he's a great artist. Cover man. And we stood on the waterside, right, against some of the trucks over there. And I looked at my wife and I said, this isn't safe. This isn't safe, there were so many people there, it just, it did not feel comfortable because it wasn't comfortable. So without going too far on that. We've got a great Fourth of July Committee in this council and this town supports you, and I include the public too. You do an outstanding job, we thank you for the efforts. I'm gonna remind everybody, but you know this, but they get up so early on the parade day to give us a beautiful day. And that is just one out of three hundred and sixty-five days that they do. Whether it's the concert series, it's whatever it is that you love about the Fourth of July celebrations. They give, they take away from their families and friends so we can enjoy it. And not just the Fourth of July Committee, Police Department, DPW. You know, I always talk about the, the Charlie Brown Christmas tree, you know, they do this at the end of the thing and they make it look beautiful. Well, DPW does that, right? At the end of it, it's clean and beautiful and it looks like our town again. And the fire department, I mean, rescue, I can keep going and going and the town gives back, the town wants this, everybody here wants this. But this is not right. And and making, I can't compel a volunteer, we can't compel a volunteer. If we make this law, and this one, this one actually stuck with me a lot as I highlighted this in in the petition. And it talks about the safety aspects, if there's extraordinary events. This is an extraordinary event. So who gets to call the safety if not the town? Who, is it the public, some portion of the public that says, we feel safe enough, so therefore let's do this? No. No, you elected us to do that, if in two years you believe we did a poor job, kick us out. Kick us out and have somebody else make that decision for you, but sit here and do that. I'm not trying to make this, we're not better than anybody else, but you said, please make these decisions for us. We can't just put it out for a vote, we need to make those decisions on time. The concerts are there and they haven't been there forever, they used to be in front of Cold School, I take my bike down there when I was a kid. Right? How many people have you talked to, uh, one of our neighbors down the street, talked to us about how the parade used to go down Franklin Street? And then it went the other way, right? And I can see people shaking their heads in agreement, so nothing has been forever, it just happens to be what you know. I think Mary, you said that, right? Is that you know your tradition. So. We need to leave this open, we need to have the flexibility. I'm absolutely happy, if if someone came up with a plan that could show that independence in the future makes sense of some way, shape or form. We're not saying no, we won't talk about it, but it has to make sense. And whether it's at Roger Williams or someplace else, then I'm open to that dialogue, but I am, I will not sign my name. Will not sign my name to something that I knowingly put the public in in some kind of danger, it makes no sense to me. So, uh, was there anybody from the public that wanted to speak, please? If you could state your name and address for the record.
Patty Nanna, twelve Greg Drive, and a member of the Fourth of July Committee and responsible for the concerts. That has been my job since I joined the committee fifteen years ago. Um, I was not in charge of it up until two thousand nineteen. And I have to say, Chief gave us a very strong and compelling reason to move. I mean, there was some feisty discussions after they left our group. And I honestly did not, uh, vote yes to move the concerts because of the exact thing we're going through now. Um, I told the team that it would be very difficult, that, um, being defended was going to be hard. And that our community was not going to be all that wonderful and accepting about it. And I appreciate, Mr. Coluro, that you actually admonished folks because quite honestly, I don't feel like being wonderful and working that hard. I am down there for a hundred and fifty hours for those two weeks, load in every night, making sure that park is clean. And striking out so that things are done so that we can come back every year and have a, an event. Now, there are things that people say, there's no safety issues. We don't put a ticker tape board up there and say, this is what bad happened yesterday, and not everything has to go to the police. Tammy and I and Dion and and Rose tolerate a lot of crap from our community. And there are bands that do not come back because we chose as a committee not to have them come back because of the behavior of the crowd. Not the behavior of the band, but the behavior of the crowd. And I've been threatened on more than one occasion because I asked people to go home at nine thirty, which is what we're supposed to do. So when we have big nights, and I have to say, back in the day, brings a big crowd in, but they're not bad behaving groups, do you know what I mean? Like, we don't have a lot of trouble with them. Um, there are bands that come in that bring a crowd that they don't come back anymore. And it's not because we don't like them, the music's fabulous, but the people that they bring are not acceptable to what we try to do as a Fourth of July Committee. Um, and so what is bothering me tonight is there was a group, that group, and I appreciate the letter and the fact that they do support us, but I appreciate what you said. But no one came to me and said, what do you think about this? This is my job, I am the chair of that group, nobody asked me what I thought, nobody asked me if I had any ideas, nobody asked me if that would work. And 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 Steve knows what I, what I'm talking about, moving bands in and out is not an easy feat. And making sure that people are in and escorted out and we've got the kids taken care of. I've got people running all over the place to make sure that folks are safe, I mean, we do it all day, all night. Um, and the last piece about it is forcing a volunteer organization, which you brought up, to do something just blows my mind. Because tomorrow we could all say, yeah, we're all done, we're really all done. And if you ask me, the only thing that has to be there for Fourth of July to maintain our moniker is the oldest continuous Fourth of July celebration. Is patriotic exercises and the parade, and I can bring out the history books to show you how long it is, and I'm doing a piece on that, and so is Manny. So you do what's best for the community. What I want folks to know is, we didn't take moving this lightly, we didn't think about and go, yeah, let's do it. Tomorrow's another day, let's get up and say, let's go somewhere else. We had a very strong discussion and we still do. But I am so disappointed in my community to talk to my group like that, to treat the people like that, I am not a moron. Trust me, I worked really hard during the day and I don't need my geritol and I'm not going back to Benjamin Church, which was the last one that was sent to me. I don't know where this comment's from, I'm not taking a bribe from Roger Williams, although I did ask for money when we went to go there and I asked Dr. King for my check. Um, he looked at me kind of funny, and we're not paying them, this is all on us, we raise it, we fundraise, we sponsorship and we put love in the bucket. And what you do for us, and we appreciate, we appreciate the support. But I want the community to know that we do this because we love our community, we want to make sure people have a good time. And if we have to change the type of music that we do, that we have to do, but folks have to remember, if we're not raising the money for it, I am not going to get that stage. I'm not going to get those bands and we're not going to have that event. So please be mindful when you make those comments in the field and on the community that, you know, you're not going to support us. Because what we do this year takes care of next year. Um, that's my story, I'm a little passionate today.
Thank you. So I think I was supposed to limit you to two minutes.
You weren't gonna get it, it wasn't gonna happen.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So I will give everybody, to be fair, so I would ask you to keep it to two minutes, but I'll give you the same time that Patty did, because that's fair, go ahead.
Yeah, Charles MacDonough, three pole court here in Bristol. Um, I as well as Pat, I'm on the committee, um, uh, I just have a couple of things. Um, we raise every dime that we spend on those concerts. The concerts, the people that attend, the Love in the Bucket and the vendors don't pay for it. So we do spring breakfasts and other events to pay for that event. So, um, it it's important that we continue with tradition. But safety is paramount, and that's why we made the decision.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for keeping it under two minutes too. Is there anyone else?
I answered, oh, no.
I'd be disappointed if you didn't get up.
I know, I know.
Yeah.
Pete Hewitt, eleven Wendy Drive. We live in terrible, terribly dangerous times, anything can happen at any time. I think it would be a big mistake for the town council to say yes on these two ordinances. And lock yourself into a position you can't get out of, particularly if something really bad happened and what the exposure. The town would have by by locking ourselves into either one site or one parade route. I think we owe, and the committee, the Fourth of July Committee is is owed a debt of gratitude and a lot of deference. To the decision they made in conjunction with the, uh, the police department's recommendation. If it's a question of safety versus convenience, in these troubled times we live in, you have to go with safety. And that being the case, I think you vote no on both these ordinances.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Under two minutes.
Thank you for self policing. So we have two petitions, one was about keep, uh, keeping the concerts at Independence. The second one was, um, not changing the parade route. I think, if I may, just real quick on the parade route one, I'm not aware of anybody looking to change it, so just, just for clarity. Um, there is no, uh, you know, impending change happening. Um, that doesn't mean that I believe we should put it into stone, but I do believe that there's nothing that's, anybody's proposing in the nearest of futures or even farther than that to change anything, so. Counsel?
I make a motion to deny both, uh, requests.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Mary to deny both requests, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, thank you, everyone.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is G one, Sis Capital Project Commission, this is for one five year term set to expire May twenty thirty. And we have Charles Coella with, uh, not seeking reappointment.
Uh, motion to accept, uh, Charles Coella's resignation with a letter of thanks. And to, uh, the motion is also to elevate the alternate Alan Spenn. Uh, as a full-time member and for us to go out and advertise for the alternate position.
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony, as stated, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
That's the end of the appointments, if you want to say anything that you normally do or move on.
Gosh, I do.
Yes.
Gosh, I do. So the clerk asked me if I wanted to say anything about volunteerism, are the volunteers still here? Yeah, there you go, thank you. I usually go down a really long path, but thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is I one, this is the public notice from CRMC in regards to one fifteen Aaron Avenue. Receiving.
Hey, son, where's this receiving file?
Yeah, there's no objections that I'm aware of from the town, so, but this is our opportunity to express those if we have any.
Just make a motion to receiving file.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Mary, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is I two, this is Harbor Master Marsili, and this is in regards to opposed ordinance change to chapter eight, section seventy-two. Independence Park Boat Ramp, and this is for vehicle load restrictions.
Greg, how are you?
Good evening.
Good evening.
And, um, so we, as y'all know, we're doing the the boat ramp over, we consulted with, uh, with par engineering to give us some load restrictions. So we, it'll last, you know, thirty to fifty more years. Uh, this is the restrictions they came up with. Um, our plan was to get this implemented, we'll put a sign up down there, notify the boaters and the other users of the ramp. So they don't bring the landing crafts back and those things that damage our ramp.
So I have a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
The last line of the ordinance proposed ordinance says, any person found in violation of this section shall be fined up to five hundred dollars. So I know the five hundred dollars is because anything over that would be a, uh, would have to go to the state, I understand that part. But why up to, number one, that's what I'd like to know, why not just five hundred?
Okay.
And and the reason why I pointed out, I, I don't like the flexibility there. I think is that if you are, if you are doing the wrong thing, then you pay a fine, not you pay a little bit less than somebody else kind of thing.
Sure.
I I would propose to the council that that be fine of five hundred dollars. Two is, how do we, um, how do we propose to enforce this?
So, as far as the fine goes, I'm, I, I only went with up to five hundred with Slitzer's recommendation. Uh, because that's what we did with the other fines that we did with the ordinance, but five hundred dollars at a time, that's fine with me. Uh, as far as enforcing it, I'm working on that right now, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna talk to our camera vendor, see if we get a camera down there that's pointing directly at the, uh, the boat ramp. We, we monitor it daily, uh, as far as the harbor patrol does and the police department, so we'll continue that. But I think that the next step will be putting a camera down there so we can keep, keep, uh, good eye on it.
So I know that we spent or authorized one point, this council authorized one point one million dollars to to do those improvements, much needed improvements.
Yes.
I think we all. I think we all want to make sure that they stay nice for, you said, 30 to 50 years? Seems appropriate.
That's, that's about the lifespan of the boat ramp.
As much as the fine is important, but the making sure that people are doing the right thing and are fined if they're not. So I don't, I hope nobody pays 500, quite honestly. So counsel, any thoughts on the up to versus 500?
I'm fine with the 500. Black and white.
So we just need a motion to, a motion with that amendment? How's that? To approve with that amendment? Any feedback, Mr. Solicitor?
No, I'm hearing and taking notes on changes you want. You're going to refer it to me basically so we go through the ordinance adoption process.
Correct.
So I'll make a motion to refer the proposed ordinance to the solicitor to draft the first reading with the agreed-upon amendment of $500 as a fine.
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony, ended discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thanks, Greg.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, if I may, before Greg leaves, I know we said thank you to the police. We said thank you to the fire, but the waterfront, somebody brought it up, you know, the fact that we are very lucky to have a former, you know, Coast Guard, you know, chief that is very familiar with the harbor, but also, you know, keeps an eye on the waters for us. So it's very much appreciated.
Thank you, Greg.
Thank you, Greg.
And let's not forget our sewer department, too.
See what happens? See what happens? And I don't do that on purpose. So, so Mary mentioned that, so the sewer department, all departments, because everybody from the department, everybody gives in and back and over. Everything. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is I3. And this is a draft resolution and recommendation to state legislators to amend Rhode Island General Law 44-3.3 and Rhode Island General Law 4513151. And there's also, you'll see on the council dais, as I received that meeting, there's an amended resolution provided by the solicitor and legislation.
Mr. Solicitor, can you weigh in on this, please?
Sure. What happened is that when Brown University owned the property, the town was able to receive appropriations in lieu of property tax, which can only be done through legislation through the General Assembly. Now that it has been transferred, we need to amend that legislation so that the town does not lose that appropriation in lieu of taxes by listing the Poconocan Management Group, which is the new owner of the property in that list. So it's, it's housekeeping, but it's very important, housekeeping.
So they're aware of this?
Oh, yeah. We've been working directly with the legal council. And the real only change that's before you tonight was the nomenclature on who the actual owner was in terms of how they want to be known.
So you just need a motion to adopt the resolution, correct?
Correct. And then the clerk's office will send that off to our legislators so that it can be introduced into the General Assembly and hopefully adopted.
I just, I just want to say a quick word about, I had no idea that we got a 27% appropriation on the value of the property, even if they are a nonprofit. I always thought it was zero. I learned that after having a discussion with the town administrator one time about Roger Williams and the payment in lieu of taxes. So it was news to me, not when this came before us, right? That, but I've heard so many people say that, you know, this institution doesn't pay taxes or that institution doesn't pay taxes. It's true that they don't. They do, we have the payment in lieu of taxes that we negotiate with them and everything, but we also get some revenues from the state.
Correct. The state does that for communities throughout the state where nonprofits exist, yes.
It's always our exercise, right, to try our best to get that 27% and get it to 100, right? So.
I like your attitude.
With the payment in lieu of taxes.
Yeah.
Counsel, just need a motion, motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim, as stated, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is J1. This is bid 1060, and this is Professional Auditing Service. We had the bid opening on April 16th, when the, prior to the council change date. And we did receive three bids that day. We received one from Cbis CPA for the amount of $63,500 for the year 2025, $65,000 for the year of 2026, and $66,500 for the year of '27. We received another bid from Hague Shahadi and Company, CPA's PC, in the amount of $69,260 for the year of 2025, $71,350 in the year of 2026, and $73,500 for the year of '27. And the third bid was received from Clifton Larson Allen LLP, and that was in the amount of $62,500 for the year of '25, $65,700 for the year of '26, and $69,000 for the year of 2027.
Madam Clerk, can you, can we have a copy of that? I don't have.
You do not, because the tabulation that you have today are the last two, because those bid openings were this evening. The bid 1060 and 1061 were held on April 16th during the original council meeting date. They did not postpone the date till today. So the actual bid tabulation is inside of your packet with those numbers.
Because I'm not finding them, that's why. Under, under J1, right?
Correct.
You know, I'm not finding any of those things.
No.
I can send them to you separately.
Yeah, we can get a copy of that, yes.
You can still act on it tonight because it is on the agenda.
We just wanted to see it.
No, understood.
It is on for 1061, some, for some reason, it's not on 1060. It looks like it came out as a blank page for some reason. So I apologize for that.
Could you just go over it again?
I can.
Would you mind just reading it again?
Yep. So the first one is Cbis CPA, and it's $63,500 for the year of 2025, $65,000 for the year of 2026, and $66,500 for the year of '27. The second one is from Hague Shahadi and Company, and that was in the amount of $69,260 for the year of '25, $71,350 for the year of '26, and $73,500 for the year of '27. And the last one was from Clifton Larson Allen LLP. And that one was in the amount of 20, I'm sorry, $62,500 for the year of '25, $65,750 for the year of '26, and $69,000 for the year of '27.
That's CLA, the last one?
That's CLA, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Actually, I just became familiar with them. They, they seem to do a good job. Anyway, I make a motion to refer to the town administrator to act in the best interest of the town.
Second.
There is a motion and a second, as stated. I think we'll include two, to the town administrator and the treasurer. Is everybody okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, outstanding. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is J2. This is bid 1061. This is the Marina Trash Skimmer, and this was also held on April 16th. And I believe that bid tabulation is in your packet.
Yeah, it is.
Okay. We received two bids that day. One was from Westway Construction, Inc., and that was in the amount of $21,700 for the skimmer, $2,000 for the delivery charge, and $2,500 for the onsite tech, with a total of $26,200. And then this.
Sorry. No, no, go ahead.
And the second one was from Porle U Marina, Inc., and that was in the amount of $28,500 skimmer, $4,000 delivery charge, $2,000 onsite tech, with a total base bid amount of $34,500.
And the funds are coming from Bristol Harbor Fest, is my understanding on this one, so.
I believe so.
Welcome back, Greg.
Hello again. These are funds we raised over the past 10 years to, to purchase this trash skimmer.
Outstanding.
Great.
Excellent. I saw, I saw the invitation out, they're saying the date for August, too.
Yeah.
Very cool.
Yeah, we're trying to get ahead of it this year. But yeah, no, it's, this is, we've been trying to afford to buy, so we finally get the money, so.
I'll make a motion to refer this to the town administrator and the harbor master to act in the best interest of the town.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Mary, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Excellent, Greg.
The next item on the agenda is J3. This is bid number 1062. This is the Spring 2025 Tree Sourcing and Delivery. We did have the bid opening today at noon. We received three bids for that one. The first bid was from Shitzels Nursery, Inc. I don't say that one right, I'm sorry.
We knew what you said.
That one was the total base amount in the amount of $18,468. The second one was from Site One Landscaping Supply with a total base price of $28,365. And the last one was from Central Nurseries, Inc., and that was in, with a total base amount of $21,470.
Make a motion to refer to the town administrator to act in the best interest of the town. And I'm sure Ad Tendre probably will get his fingers in that.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Mary, as stated, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is J4, and this is bid 1063 Gibson Road Shoreline Improvements. And we had the bid opening today at noon. We did receive seven bids for this one. The first bid was from JML Escavating, Inc., in the amount of $28,433. The second one was from Skirka Construction, Inc., in the amount of $135,397. The third one was from Luciano Escavation, Inc., in the amount of $299,000.
Is there a missing number on the first one?
There is not.
No?
Not a typo.
Okay.
One would think, but it is not.
Okay.
I know, Tony.
And then there's page two.
Big difference.
The next one was from East Coast Landscaping and Construction, Inc., in the amount of $195,678. The fifth one was from True North Civil LLC in the amount of $105,610. The sixth one was from Universal Construction Company, Inc., in the amount of $83,420. And the last one was from CJR Atlantic, Inc., in the amount of $165,994.29. We did verify the number.
Right. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you on your thing, but I just couldn't help.
During the bid opening.
Yes, I'm going, eh, okay. Make a motion to refer to the town administrator to act in the best interest of the town.
Second. Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim, as stated, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is K1. This is the Bristol County Water Authority Tri-Town Monthly Report from March 2025.
Motion to receive and file?
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony, as stated, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And then we have the consent agenda items, GG3 and GG5.
Yes. So I had asked for this first one to be pulled for probably pretty obvious reasons. This is the Town of Bristol 2024 Annual Report. Mr. Administrator, I know that Eric did, if I understand it correctly, Eric did a tremendous amount of work on this.
Well.
Eric Dickovich?
Eric certainly did, but really the departments in the entire town, including everybody here, did the work, but he just compiled it.
There it is. We knew there was something to that. Good for you, Eric. Get all the credit and none of the work.
But he, yeah, he did a good job pulling it together, and it's a very good presentation. I, I'm glad you, you raised the item because it's on the website, and I, I hope the public takes a look at what was accomplished this year. Infrastructure and there's a section on our finances there. Sewer upgrades, all good news at our sewer plant. And, yeah, so.
So public, go on our website, take a look at, at that report. It's, it's very interesting reading, believe it or not. And it's brief to the point and great news. So it's, it's a great thing to take a look at. Any comments from the council?
I, I agree, you know, in terms of, first of all, thank you for all that it's been done to all of the departments. But it's good to see the compilation of all that has been accomplished and for people to see the textile side of their work, you know, and departments are doing their best to keep the town running pretty smooth.
Outstanding. Just need to receive and file, please. So moved?
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony, as stated, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The other one is GG5, which is a memo from the Rhode Island Turnpike and Bridge Authority. Lori Karen Silvera. Mr. Administrator, do you want to capture this one?
Sure. So again, thank you for pulling this. I think this is for public information. We're sharing information from the Bridge Authority on the condition of the roadway on the Montau Bridge. So this is an update. So the director, Lori Karen Silveria, is communicating to the town of what steps have been made. They filled potholes, and they have a plan for this summer during the warmer months, and it's be during warmer climate to seal the surface of the, the bridge deck with a rubberized coating. It's like a chip sealing. So that would be curb to curb. And they have in their five-year capital plan, I think it's their five-year capital plan to rebuild the entire deck on the bridge. So she did state to me by telephone the last time that was done. You may recall it was back in the 1980s. So it's a pretty, pretty big project. When I'm, I've been communicating with the director. She's very forthcoming with information. She's going to get back to me on the vehicle capacity rating right now. It's at 30,000 pound capacity, which is a problem for some of our businesses in town. So she's going to get back to me on whether the dehumidification project, whether that, once that's complete, whether that would be able, they'd be able to raise the vehicle rating for the bridge back to where it was before. So I don't have an answer on that, but I'm staying on it. But you'll see in the communication that, that they are doing maintenance on the bridge. Right now it's structural stuff, but the deck will be attended to this summer. But it is in rough shape.
It sure is. Yeah. When I sat with the administrator earlier this week, and we had a conversation about this, also mentioned, as you drive across the bridge, if around rush hour, the traffic is horrible. So through the administrator's office, who reached out to DOT, those lights are timed, and they connected with the light on the other side of the bridge. So we asked them to go take a look at it. I guess they fall out of, what do they fade, faded or something sequence? So they're going to take a look at that, and they did that a couple of years ago, actually, on my request. And it made a big difference. So I think that sync, again, will make a, a big improvement on, on wait times there, so.
May I read one of the paragraphs here?
Please.
It's stated much better than how I explained it. It's, "In addition to the pothole work done regularly, RITBA is currently bidding a project for this summer, which is a short-term solution, a micro-mill patching of holes in a rubberizing asphalt chip seal treatment to help restore rideability. We also have a longer-term solution, replacing of the bridge deck. We are in the RFP process for a design consultant for that project."
Mr. Chairman, I remember, what was it, a year or two ago, she actually came and briefed us on the dehumidification project and some of the grants that they were getting from the federal government for that. And so that was very well-received, the, the input that we got from her.
Agreed.
Just need another motion for receiving file, please.
So moved? Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony, as stated, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Now we just need a motion to adjourn. Oh, let me do it. You want me to do it, you know.
The motion would be to convene into executive session pursuant to 42465A5 relative to the acquisition or disposition of public property.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony, discussion. This ends the regular part of the meeting. We will turn the video off. We'll come back out after executive session to finish the meeting. And last thing, on behalf of the council, we appreciated the dialogue. It was done well throughout the whole evening. And so petitioners and otherwise, thank you all for both sides of that conversation and answer and questions. This council appreciates it. Thank you. Have a good night.